Okay, cool, 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 cool. You're gonna understand later on in this study, yes, Kez. You're gonna understand later in the study why Ota Joy is so important and specifically for Nichiren Buddhists in the SGI. Why when we hear that song out on the streets or if it just randomly plays on the radio, it hits us differently because it was actually because of that song. Um, there was a massive liberation. Um, as we've spoken about over the last fourteen, thirteen weeks. Um, there was a split with Nichiren Shoshu in nineteen ninety-one and um, but we'll go into that. Uh, a little birdie tells me maybe Johnny's gonna touch in today, the actual author. Um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, but hopefully he's gonna be able to touch in and um, answer some questions and just be here for five minutes, which is just incredible. Isn't that just amazing? Hopefully. So I've asked him. As, let me just start as usual. This isn't an SGI meeting. This is just a study of a book with me, The Evolving Buddha by Johnny Gilbert. Um, he never once asked me to do this. Uh, it was just off of my own kind of intuition. I knew I really wanted to do something in these times with the pandemic, everything, just to be able to spread um, something that really helps me. And 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 just to be able to create a community, you know. So thank you always for being here. I can't believe this is fourteen weeks. Um, I know some of the people here have literally pretty much been here every week. I know there's been some some deep, beautiful transformations um, I'm hearing. And I'm having my own transformations by actually doing this. Um, I just worked it out while I was chanting before we started this. It's basically three and a half months, three and a half months complete. Um, every Wednesday, um, like I've said to you before, man, there's been times when I've not wanted to come, there's been times, not because I've not wanted to do this, but because of my own life, you know. I'm bringing up a lot of karma in order to be able to do this. So yeah, man, I'm so proud of myself and all of you. Every single one of you that I'm currently seeing has been here. Uh, one or two people might be from New. Just thank you. Let's chant for like four minutes and then we'll start. And then we can crack open more bowls. Let me, uh, spin round. So what's the time? Alright, it's nine past. I'm gonna chant to you fourteen past on an iPhone. Let's go. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, 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 Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho 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 Reng E Chyo. Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo, Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo. Wow, this is the last time we'll do that all together for this book anyway. I'm not gonna lie, I turned around to ring the bell when I saw Celeste and her son and I almost glitched. I was like, oh my god, this is incredible. You're amazing. I've I've can't remember your name. Young Lion, but thank you for being a part of that. Um, so. I'll show you the case I keep my beads in. So beautiful. And uh, this is a is a rose quartz tower. And I made the decision maybe like two weeks ago to always keep this rose quartz tower with my beads because it represents the treasure tower. Remember the beginning? Sally Sally Smith, you are the treasure tower. Um, by no means am I saying by having crystals with my beads, it makes my prayer more powerful. I'm just, for me, it's just a simple, beautiful reminder that we are the treasure tower. And of course, the rose quartz heart chakra, love. Wanted to share that with you. I'm gonna read the guidance for today, then we're gonna get started. Let me have a sip of this red wine, man. Big Harley, yes, yes, fourteen weeks and the camera came on. I love that. Yeah, had to happen, man, had to happen. Thank you. So, cool. November the ninth. I love this because this to me is is everything that we've, uh, basically the 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 mean, the reason I wanted to do this was just to make people step into their authentic self and remember that we are the treasure tower. It wasn't to become Buddhists or to join the SGI, as much as that is amazing. And I know that that is happening with certain people and I'll be there by your side for all of that. But my main reason was just to just spread hope in this moment. And this guidance, considering it lands on the final day, to me is so beautiful. And I have put it on my Instagram today, so you may have read it already, but it says, "Don't put on airs. Conceit and pretense don't win people's heart. The facade soon crumbles. Be yourself." Buddhism teaches, "We can shine most brilliantly through natural unaffected behaviour. Being sincere, dedicated and honest is the key. People of integrity triumph in the end." So yeah, be your authentic self. And it can, do you know what? It's one of the most friggin hardest things to do. Be your authentic self, especially in front of people that you love and you care because you're scared about worry, what would they, what are they gonna think? Are they gonna, are they gonna judge me? Am I gonna lose this person if I tell them this is how I feel? Um, and sometimes you may lose that person, sometimes you'll actually go even closer to that person by actually saying, you know what? Oh, man, like, not sure this is the best thing. I feel like this is how I feel. Um, you'll be surprised, man, by just revealing your true authentic light, how much um, that gets reflected back to you. So yeah, that was the message for that. Um, that being said, let me see if this is gonna work. Then if you saw that, let me do it one more time. It's a party out here, man. It's a party. Look at this. Yeah, we're celebrating life. We're celebrating life. Yeah. Um, life is crazy, man. Look at the news. Yes, Kez, look at the news right now, man. There's so much going on. Look what just happened at the concert, man. The dignity of life of of the fans and humans was not respected. This is showing you how the industry of music is more about gluttony and money and drawing people in for their own agenda, uh, uh, rather than the actual respect of the dignity of life of humans. And this is what we're facing this week alone in the mass media. So you know, it's more than, it's more than ever. Do we have to truly shine our authentic light? And 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 be happy. So that being said, let's go straight into the conclusion. Party proper energy. Yeah, man. I walked twenty minutes just to get them today for this moment. Yeah, real life out here, man. Toya Lawrence, thank you so much for being here, if you're here with your mother. Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo. Give me a moment, guys. Let me just open up this conclusion. It's gonna be slightly shorter. Normally we do between seventeen and twenty-one pages, but we're gonna do twelve today. Like I said, maybe Johnny's gonna join, um, maybe not. But he's been here the entire time anyway, energetically. So we're on our fourteenth. Let me find it. Cool, got it. One more time, man. I woke up this morning, every morning on a Wednesday, I wake up and I I get my highlighter out and I and I highlight what we're gonna be, what really hits me for the study. And um, it was, yeah, like it was like mixed emotions, man. It was like a feeling of gratitude and like, yeah, man, great, next week I don't have to worry about nothing. I can just wake up Wednesday and not worry. But then also a mixture of sadness that I'm not gonna be able to be able to create this sangha with you every Wednesday, community of believers. But um, most importantly, I just felt hope, you know, it's like, wow, like if we can do this in in the most difficult timeline that's ever happened, without going too esoteric and sight away from Buddhism, this is the zero point timeline, past, present and future, all happens in this timeline. There's not been a lifetime. And we've had more lifetimes than dust particles on this great, on this earth, know that. It's an incalculable number of lifetimes we've had. Not one of them has been more profound in this lifetime now. This is the zero point lifetime. So to be able to gather together and just try and like talk out philosophy, well, me more talk and you absorb. Uh, but to me, it is a two-way conversation because when you got your cameras on, even if you don't, I still feel your energy. So um, that being said, let's just go in. I'm proud of all of us. Fourteenth session, let's go. Um, I don't have Chris with me this evening, so I might be slightly glitchy as I jump between um, doing some of the technical stuff as well. And I might start slurring because um, yeah, man. I'm half Australian if no one knew, so I had to get some of that yellow-tailed jammy red rue. Anyway, so evolving Buddha. Conclusion. Who who would have thought, man? Conclusion. Let's go. Straight in with some hard facts. Buddhism is man-made from its outset. Unlike many philosophies and religions, it did not claim to be divinely inspired by a supreme being, but instead was a construct, a roadmap for maximizing human life created by humanity itself. Is religion really on the wane? Religion, particularly in the West, has had a hard time of it in the last two hundred years, primarily because science has undermined the logic and believability of much of the narrative of the Judeo-Judeo-Christian tradition, such as the creation of the earth and Jesus's miracles. It may seem that we have entered a secular age without the need for the structure of a philosophy or religion. And yet, the noted Israeli historian and author of Sapiens and Homo Dios, I believe that says, oh, guys, Johnny Gilbert is about to enter. Oh my god. Um, and by the way, this book, Sapiens and Homo Dios, I believe, I haven't actually read it, but I have got it. So I can't, when I read this this morning, I was so excited. Johnny, thank you so much for joining us. Um, I'm actually gonna read to the next page and then I'm gonna let Johnny maybe say a word because I don't wanna take up too much of his time. So let me just start this part here. Religion, particularly in the West, has had a hard time of it in the last two hundred years, primarily because science has undermined the logic and believability of much of the narrative of the Judeo-Christian tradition, such as the creation of the earth and Jesus's miracles. It may seem that we have entered a secular age without the need for the structure of a philosophy or religion. And yet, the noted Israeli historian and author of Sapiens and Homo Dios, Yuval Noah Harari suggests modern society is very different to how we perceive it. He presays that liberalism, capitalism, communism and consumerism are all as much religions as those that are historically and conventionally described as such because they are systems of human norms and values based on a perceived natural law beyond humanity. Uh, Theist God-centered religions consider God to be the basis of the superhuman order, but this is not the case in all religions. For humanity to effectively work together, it creates cultures grounded on collective myths. But these are not tales of imaginary heroes or gods defeating fabulous monsters. The myths of our time are equally created by the human imagination, but gain their power through shared agreement. Money, the stock market, nations and even human rights are human constructs which are not absolutes and change over time. Harari states, "Most people do not wish to accept that the order governing their lives is imaginary. But in fact, every person is born into a pre-existed imagined order and his or her desires are shaped from birth by its dominant myths." Our personal desires thereby become the imagined order's most important defences. For instance, the most cherished desire of present-day Westerners are shaped by romantic, nationalist, capitalist and humanist myths that have been around for centuries. Makuguchi, the first president of the Soka Gakkai, understood this in creating his uh, theory of value, which at its most basic level looks at all actions through the lens of whether they enhance humanity or diminish the existence of ourselves and others. Makuguchi's value creation thereby challenges our passive acceptance of our dominant myths. So before I go to a Soka Gakkai Buddha, let me just stop sharing this. Johnny, are you happy if I unmute you and just introduce you? Perfect. Um, I have asked you to unmute, so let me know. It's the first time anyone's gonna hear anyone else's voice in the last uh,
Hello, Aaron. Hello, everyone. Lovely to be here.
Thank you so much for being here. Um,
I just wanna say first of all, thank you so much, all of you guys, for being on this journey with the book. Because um, you know, it's it's, you know, you've gone a long way with it and uh, it's um, you know, I hope it's it's got some interesting gems for you. Some of it's quite kind of hardcore, quite deep. So well done for making it all the way through in terms of it. And I really appreciate your sincerity and your engagement with it. And especially Aaron, in terms of you creating this as well.
Thank you.
Thanks indeed.
I um, when I first started this, the first maybe three weeks, I was, I started like really questioning, oh my god, this is quite deep, you know, and and you know, you admit it, you admit it for yourself. This isn't a book really for beginners. It's to kind of refresh the kind of people that have been practicing for a while and to approach it in a different way and to kind of like look at their faith and and how it's evolving. And um, I start, you know, when we was on the Lotus Sutra chapter, I was like sweating. Oh my god, are these guys, but listen, three and a half months on and these are the same faces that were here at the very beginning, you know. So what bodhisattvas they truly are in spirit, uh, truly.
Wonderful, wonderful. Yeah, absolutely. And um, yeah, it's certainly, I've had people who have come to it fresh. Um, and haven't had much experience of Buddhism and got something out of it. So um, but I'm sure the way you've you, you know, the other great thing is it's not just been about the book, it's about your passion as well, Aaron, isn't it? And you know, I've been watching a few of the YouTube clips and I'm sure that the highlights for a lot of you are gonna be when Aaron goes on one. Um, because he's got so much integrity, so much passion and sincerity as well. And um, I'm sure that's a lot of the reason, not just my book, why these guys have carried on.
Well, while I have you here, for me, when I first read the book before studying it, um, what really blew me away as a member is just how you've, like you've said, you've used kind of your education in all of these universities and stuff to kind of show how the Lotus Sutra can't actually be connected to Shakyamuni's actual physical words. It was a development of like, you know, that whole process. Um, and that that's something I'm gonna take on forever, you know, because I wasn't real, I wasn't really aware of that, you know. I don't think many people are aware of that. So you've really bought in this book from really, I think, you know, I think even members of fifty years are gonna gain such benefit from reading it.
Yeah, I think, I think that whole message of that is also kind of wake-up call for everyone about, you know, religion being fundamentalist in a way. Because I think anything, you know, all religions say, oh, so-and-so wrote this, this is it, this is the absolute kind of thing and everything. And when you, when you kind of break away from that and you think, actually, this, this is wisdom. There is wisdom in these words, but they're probably the creation of a lot of wise people.
Wow.
Uh, and a culmination, rather than sort of putting one person on a pedestal and saying, this is Buddhism, this is, it's just the creation of this one guy. You know, even pretty much all, not just the Lotus Sutra, pretty much all of the Buddhist texts. You can't be ascribed to, well, none of them can be actually ascribed to Shakyamuni Buddha in a way. No, there was no, there was no writing when he was around, you know. They, they, it was passed on orally. And if you think, you know, passing on over almost centuries orally, it it would have evolved massively over those centuries before they started writing stuff down. So it's, it's all the culmination of people on their spiritual path. And once we realize that, not just with Buddhism, but with all religions, then we can kind of break away from saying, this is the only way and this is, it's absolute and you know, that's it. Um, and and see it as um, a journey that we're all on.
Yeah, yeah, adapting and evolving.
Indeed.
Before I let you go, just just if anyone does have anything they would like to ask, please just like you pop your hand up or write a a quick message. Um, but if not, uh, just yeah, just profound to be here with you, Johnny, and and thank you. And and for you, I think it's just, it was correct for you to be at the very end, you know, right after we've kind of gone through it. And you know, I've only even, me and you, we've only, I think, crossed paths physically maybe twice, maybe or once or twice. Um, you know, for me, the two most, the two books that have really, I think, sharpened my itching in and my faith was um, The True History of the Fuji School, the SGI USA book and your book. You know, I think these are fundamental books that really are, and I love at the end, we're gonna talk about, we haven't got there yet, but you talk about how this book isn't to cause any um, uh, I can't remember what you used the word, but it's actually to like, you know, to bring new ideas to the table and allow for that conversation to be had, you know. Um, it's, it's, it's not to slander anything or anything like that. It's literally to to, and that's, that's what we need to have now as Buddhists. Um, the courage to be able to be flexible and 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 to evolve, you know, and to, if I, if if we was actually practicing like Nichiren was seven hundred years ago, me and you, Johnny, no one here would be on this call today, you know, it'd be, it'd be so far removed, you know, from 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 life.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And um, I think the other thing is that in terms of um, being part of a movement, you know, of being part of others, you know, you, that chapter, chapter five, isn't it, which is about Soka Gakkai and everything? Um, is that, you know, or if you're a part of any other spiritual group as well, doesn't have to just be, you know, Soka Gakkai, but you're gonna get different people with different perspectives. Some people are gonna be a little bit more rigid, just in terms of their their mindset and and where they're coming from. And they're gonna be more people who who are flexible or 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 changing. And um, that, you know, that's not, neither are kind of um, absolute indications of what that movement or organization are about because it's all made up of different people. And people can kind of judge it just by one person or, oh, it's not for me because of that person's like that. You know, that's just where they're at in their journey in a way. But there's, you know, hopefully that chapter really explained the benefits of being part of something and and being connected in a community in terms of our spiritual journey as well.
Well, I love, you know, you've got some of the science behind that as well, being part of a collective, you know, being part of an actual group. And I know Sensei said this back in the nineties, you know, like, slow, in the twenty-first century, science will also start to prove the validity of being in an organization and Buddhism. So you know, you, again, you're doing kind of, you're showing that in this book.
Hmm.
So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Cheers, Johnny Gilbert. What an honor.
Um, You've all got your wine for the last one, is that the, is uh,
We've got the wine, we've got the uh, we've got the party poppers. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's um, it's a funny day. It's amazing. But yeah, thank you so much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue, stay as long as you want to and or or need.
I'll dip out because I'm actually hosting another Zoom, um, an SGI Zoom in 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 a little while. So um, I can't stay till the end, but I'll, I'll stay in for a bit more.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Unless anyone has a question, if anyone has any questions, then I'm happy to.
Yeah, man. Honestly, guys, you have, you have a scholar, in my opinion, right here in front of you, if you have anything to ask. Um, or even if while I'm talking, I'll, it'll pop up over the next, I'm sure, five minutes, it'll be with us at least. So um, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue.
We can just carry on.
Thank you, guys. Alright, so let me take a sip of this. Soka Gakkai Buddha. This book has been an effort to reevaluate the constructs of Nichiren Buddhism, to see that likewise, the frameworks of practice is not absolute and fixed, nor was it in the past. Jose Toda coined the expression Soka Gakkai Buddha to embody the ideal of an organization of many members all personally transforming themselves through tackling the challenges of their daily lives and in so doing, revealing their Buddhahood. In this sense, the Soka Gakkai and SGI are also constructs, a flexible framework to afford the realization of the highest life state for uh, for as many as wish to engage with it. Chanting the phrase Nam Yo Ho Reng E Chyo is the absolute, which goes beyond any human myths or order to tap a natural universal law. But this chanting and its associated teachings find fullest expression within the structures of an organization. Only through them can the flame of empowerment be passed on for collective societal myths, which cause suffering to humanity and destruction to the planet, can then be challenged and reformed. Harry points out in terms of societal change, "If I alone were to stop believing in the dollar, in human rights or in the human, uh, in the United States, it wouldn't much matter." These imagined orders are intersubjective, so in order to change them, we must simultaneously change the consciousness of billions of people, which is not easy. A change of such magnitude can be accomplished only with the help of a complex organization. Harry has made clear, "If you feel disempowered by all the awful things in the world or you feel you wanna make a difference, join an organization." SGI offers a means to establish a peaceful society through dialogue, discussion and action in affirming collective values based on the dignity of life, the interconnectedness of life, the environment and the environment, and respect for individual rights and freedoms. In contrast, Harry notes how the last two hundred years really have also seen how the growth of nation-states and markets has resulted in the rise of of the concept of individualism. With the state and market taking care of education, health and welfare, the traditional bonds of family and community which were previously relied upon in these areas were weakened. The liberize, uh, liberation of the individual to make his or her own decision, a choice in marriage, work or leisure outside of those bonds has resulted in freedoms and opportunities our ancestors could not even have dreamt of. However, it has come at a cross. Evolutionary design to live and think as community members, the increase in isolation of the individual has been to the detriment of our well-being. Our consumer society focused on the individual seat, uh, sorry, our consumer society focused on the individual sees the solution to this loss of well-being in the purchase of goods, experiences, therapies or courses. What I hope this book has also illustrated is that community, spiritual transcendence and finding a meaningful purpose in life are, as the science indicates, a far surer path to happiness. In addition, finding a great mentor in life can most fully facilitate this journey. A performance that went wrong. As a young man, I was invited to take part in a pan-European SGI event in Milan, Italy. The meeting, held in a large conference hall, would comprise several thousand young Buddhists from all over Europe. I was invited to be part of a choir which would sing Ota Joy from Beethoven's Sympathy, number nine. Now, we was listening to this at the beginning, guys, so this is where I was saying, you all understand why the Ota Joy is so important to um, to Buddhists. So this piece has great significance for SGI, even becoming an important anthem. As it was in December nineteen ninety that the Nichiren Shoshu priests had criticized the singing of Ota Joy at an SGI meeting led by Akida in the previous month. They claimed it showed support for Christianity and in their minds was therefore a slander of the law. This was one of the pretexts they used to remove Akida as head of Nichiren Shoshu lay organization in January nineteen ninety-one. This was an early point of disagreement which later led to the full separation of the two organizations. For SGI members, nothing encompasses the difference between the inclusive and outward-looking movement they are part of and the exclusionary and blinkered viewpoint that the rejection of Beethoven's great paean to the highest potential of the human spirit to inner joy and human freedom. Ota Joy became an anthem for SGI's own liberation from the shackles of dogmatism and authoritarianism. Our performance was due in the middle of the event. During an interval, I left my seat to take a rest break, but ended up in a long queue for the gift shop. Having finally paid, I heard the opening bars of Ota Joy as I scrambled to get back to my seat. I felt terrible, unprofessional and completely unprepared for the performance. My head ached and I felt sick to the pit of my stomach. My expectation had been that the performance would be a transcendent moment, singing Beethoven's masterpiece in front of thousands of fellow members. Instead, I felt unnerved by my disorganization and embarrassed by my late entry. Nonetheless, I stuck with it and sang my heart out. After chanting the next day, I came to a place where I did not feel a failure, but felt a sense of appreciation that I had not given up despite the circumstances. This then emboldened me to imply this never give up spirit in my challenges at work. The Phantom City. The Lotus Sutra describes the parable of the Phantom City. A group of travelers are journeying to a treasured land, but on their way, they become weary and wish to turn back. At this point, a city appears before them where they rest and regain their spirits, ready to continue their adventures towards their goal. In fact, it is the leader of the group who has magically conjured the Phantom City, which vanishes in the morning, to convince his fellow travelers to continue on their quest. The final destination represents our Buddhahood, and although the writers of the Lotus Sutra probably had in mind expedient Buddhist teachings, the Phantom City can represent any goal we have or activity we partake in on our spiritual journey. My experience in Milan can likewise be seen in terms of the Phantom City, an experience which was not an end in itself, but some, something I can take from on my path to reveal my Buddhahood. The preparation and build-up towards it was an important, was as important as the performance. The tale of the Phantom City represents what Harry's concept of collective cultural myths, but also the evolutionary process of the constructs we have examined in this book. In seeing Nichiren, in seeing Nichiren's own journey, his understanding of his mission and his development of the In seeing a Nitron, in seeing Nitron's own journey, his understanding of his mission and his development of the Gohanzen. We see the continuum of his process to access the eternal. Even the Lotus Sutra in its many geises is a phantom city in and of itself. Guiding the traveller towards enlightenment. An all-embracing spirit. Nitron wrote, though the adherent, I really love this part, guys, by the way, this is why I, I highlighted this part. Nitron wrote. Though the adherence of the non-Buddhist scriptures were unaware of it, the wisdom of such men contained at heart the wisdom of Buddhism. And I remember when I first heard this, guys, it made me really lose my ego and have a conversation of a Buddhist, uh, like a, like an Islamic person, for instance. And instead of trying to convince them that my way was the way, recognising that their way was the way as well, and they're just experiencing it in a different way. And it, it kind of just really humbled me to recognise that actually they've also stumbled across the same kind of truth. So, one more time. Nitron wrote, through the adherence of the non-Buddhist scriptures, no, sorry, though the adherence of the non-Buddhist scriptures were unaware of it. The wisdom of such men contained at heart the wisdom of Buddhism. This is the all-encompassing spirit of Nitron Buddhism, which S G I and Daishaku Akida have made a reality. A spirit which can embrace a Southern Baptist Christian minister such as Lawrence Carter, who can see the ultimate reality transcending all constructs when he says. It's very simple, there are many names for that power, that force, that principle, that law which governs the universe. A spirit which equally embraces a communist atheist such as Chinese Premier Zhuo Enlai, who insisted on meeting Akida. Despite being in poor health shortly before he passed away. The scholar Olivier Urbain, who used the metaphor of an orchestra to describe Akida's universal. Universalist approach to engaging in dialogue with those of other faiths. There is no music without instruments or human voice. Once a musician has chosen an instrument, the goal is to, uh, the goal is still to play music. Seriously devoting yourself to one specific instrument, for instance, the piano, and tr- uh, trying to reach musical excellence makes it difficult. And often impossible to practise several instruments at the same time. This corresponds to Akida having chosen Nitron Buddhism. However, the goal of becoming an excellent pianist is not to show the superiority of the piano over all other instruments. But to be able to produce music that will touch the hearts of many listeners and also to perform in an ensemble, band and orchestra, with other musicians playing other instruments. This corresponds to Akida's passion for dialogue and for the promotion of humanism regardless of its spiritual and intellectual sources. What I hope this book has given you. I hope this book has afforded the reader the opportunity to reinvigorate their Buddhist practice. Through a process of reconfiguring the collective constructs, constructs at the heart of Buddhism. All the research that I undertook for each of the chapters only affirmed the value of this path to me. Equally, I hope that any reader who has read this book prior to starting to practise Buddhism will be sufficiently inspired by the studies I have presented. To see that there is no hidden agenda, no esoteric or unqualifiable mysteries, which beg a belief and hold one back from giving chanting. Uh, chanting the phrase Nam Myoharenge Kyo ago. Ten minutes in the morning and evening to a blank wall is a great prescription for a beginner with plenty of recordings on YouTube. To get the hang of it. I also hope that the book explore, uh, explodes some of the external criticisms laid upon Nitron Buddhism. Because most of us live in a free society, we have the liberty to start practising the religion or philosophy of our choice and equally the liberty to stop practising it. Whatever the reason for someone giving up their Buddhist faith, it is an important right for a society to be able to do so. S G I affirms that right, while placing friendship, interpersonal relationships as the most important priority wherever people are with their faith or lack of it. Nitron acknowledged the difficulty in sustaining Buddhist practice. He described the unfixed nature of our minds and how easily we are swayed. While exiled on Sado Island and cast as an outlaw, he described how ninety-nine out of his one hundred of his followers left him. And ceased to practise for fear of censor from the authorities and due to doubt cast by their criminal status. In his letter, the difficulties of sustaining faith, he writes, to accept is easy, to continue is difficult. But Buddhahood lies in continuing faith. Over my twenty years of practice, I could in no way have predicted those of my friends and fellow members who have continued. And those who have given up their Buddhist practice. Some seemingly strong practitioners have suddenly stopped while those less active have continued. Nitron's encouragement to have faith like water rather than fire may be of some relevance here, and I've said this to you guys often, it's so important. With our spirituality and as we're evolving, to have faith like running water that's always consistent, because there's so many people that we talk about Buddhism to. And they're so passionate and they're chanting for ten hours as soon as, and then they die and they, and it's like a fire that burns out. So it's much more powerful to have faith like water. Nitron's encouragement to have faith like water rather than fire may be of some relevance here. Sometimes stopping and experiencing life again without the practice can result in a resumption of it with even greater confidence. Nonetheless, steady, consistent efforts are the ideal. The reason for stopping can be varied and may sometimes be due to an external conflict. An unresolved life crisis or pressure from family and friends. However, ultimately, the cause is internal. To justify their rejection of Buddhism, people can sometimes develop reasons to protect and bolster their choice, even going to the internet to source justifications to undermine S G I. Akida and Nitron. People want to feel vindicated and righteous in the decision they make. By basing my research on academic studies, my aim was to give a balanced account around these topics. In the end, it was those supporters of Nitron who continued in their practice despite tremendous obstacles that we remember to this day. The samurai Shidio Kingyo, who won through despite the enviable rivalry of his fellow retainers. And the initial rejection of his lord, or the Ikami brothers who persisted in following the Lotus Sutra despite the disappropriation of their father. Who was eventually won around to practise alongside them. Spiritual freedom. Although I have not dwelled too long on the subject, I hope that by looking at the research, the contrasts between the spirit of S G I and the priestly order of Nitron Shoshu. Has been fairly considered. Nitron Shoshu considers to call itself true Buddhism, an inappropriate type, title for a pluralistic age. It smacks of disrespect to all other faiths. Theres is a truth which is supported by a quasi magical claim for supreme Gohanzen. And even a tooth purported to be Nitron's on which it is claimed flesh grows at auspicious times. Hmm, that makes me shiver. In separation from priestly authority, S G I has not only been able to reject such medieval thinking outright. But to embrace an approach which sees truth in many like-minded philosophies and teachings which um, elevate the preciousness of life and the desire for world peace. In the main, anybody who makes a choice does so with the opinion that is right and just. One chooses a religious path by being confident of the logic and relevance of its teachings and methods. Whilst S G I is still firmly convinced of the correctness of its cause, of the elevated nature of its values and the efficiency of its practice. This is not to the exclusion of wider human values that transcend structures and approaches. Our shared humanity and the pulse of life itself supersedes all else. In considering the nineteen ninety-one split early on in the nine, in the mid nineties. Uh, Brian Boking of Bath College predicted that the Japanese members of Sokagakai, who were more rooted in tradition. Would require a more measured and less radical change to customs and teachings that the overseas members, who would be more prepared for a fuller anti-hierarchical separation. From priestly authority. In the end, both Japan and the rest of the S G I have fully unshackled themselves from Nitron Shoshu. But Boken's point may explain the gradual and measured changes to doctrine, which we have seen regarding the Gohanzen and the status of Nitron. If my conclusions in these areas seem a step further than S G I has officially stated, it is only to inspire debate. Allow access to the academic research and contribute to the ongoing development of S G I. The Buddhism of transformation, not perfection. I must stress that the book should not be used as an excuse to disrupt the precious unity of S G I. Doctoral evolution takes time and S G I is already open and flexible enough to allow differences of opinions on some matters. As the book has shown, S G I and Nitron Buddhism has already undergone incredible rapid change over the last hundred years. Led by the brilliant initiatives of the three presidents, while ensuring to keep close to Nitron's true heart and intentions. This book is not an excuse to create counter narratives or worst of all, conspiracy theories. In fact, by being rooted in university-led academic research, it stands against the sad modern trend on the worldwide web to sow emotive and paranoid theories. This is a psychological payoff in feeling aggri- uh, aggrieved, angry and emboldened by supposed forces or organisations. That are seemingly pulling strings in hidden ways. I encourage believers in such theories to question the conspiracy theorists as much as they can. Question the accepted accounts of things. Are they connected to the alt-right or other movements with their own agenda? Where are their evidential sources and have they been checked? Invariably, for S G I members to fall for such claims is because they have neglected their mentor. And his teachings in their heart. Instead, I will be most gratified if this book has empowered you and encouraged you to practise mo- uh, more vibrantly. More confidently and with even more conviction. The practice of Nitron Sokagakai Buddhism is an amazing tool. To direct one's life on a positive trajectory. It has allowed me to create enormous value in mine and others' lives through internal change. And decisive external action. As a vice president of S G I recently said, this is not the Buddhism of perfection. It is the Buddhism of transformation. This transformation holds as much for the individual as it does for the local district or the whole S G I movement. For it is the flexible inherent in the S G I movement that has spurred its growth to continue, to renew and to transform. And means there is great hope for the furtherance of Nitron Buddhism. The Sokagakai continues to be an evolving Buddha. Fourteen weeks, baby. Yeah. The Sokagakai Buddha continues to be an evolving Buddha. Wow. I mean, for me, as I said, and I've been telling people, Johnny, this whole time, you know, I, I never started this so that, you know. I could try and bring people into the S G I or even turn them into Buddhists. But just, my main reason was just really to inspire people to, to. Take a step forward, just one step forward in involving in your spirit and to, and, and to really recognise what, and as, as, as it says in that last chapter, there's many other faiths. But for me, as long as that faith recognizes the dignity of life and connects you to that same universal power and recognising that we are part of that, the microcosm of the macrocosm. Then Nam Myoharenge Kyo to that faith. I wish you to be the best Islamic person, the best Christian you're going to be, like truly reveal your truest um, potential, you know. For us, our refined method of chanting Nam Myoharenge Kyo is what we use, but it was um, fourteen weeks of mountains and. Fighting my own karma and I'm sure all of you guys have been hearing and, you know, you've had to fight karmas trying to get here, you know, that people are breaking down on the, on the motorway and then trying to like. Listening and, and it's just, it's been the most incredible um, time and um, and it's been at the most incredible. Transformation in our society as well. So this, to, to me, this is what it means to not give up, you know, this could have been the time where you go, okay, like, we'll wait. We'll wait for the future when we can all get together and I can have you come to my house and do the book club, but it's not, it's no, let's always do the best that we can with what we have, always. Always. If I didn't have this, I may, I may have just rang someone and just done it with one or two people. I can tell all of you, my life has absolutely evolved. By making the effort to turn up for fourteen weeks. Some of my most precious, deep prayers have been answered in ways that I know are only connected with the people. That have been turning up on this call or the efforts that I've been making. Um, my faith has quadrupled, tripled. I always told you guys, in order to study a book. Read it three times. Read it the first time like it's fun, just enjoy it, read it on the second time, read it how we've done it this time, study it, talk about it. And the third time, if it's kind of like, um, if there's kind of a protagonist or a main character, really put yourself in that character's shoes and imagine what they're going through. You're going through and, and, and you're having to go through that. And so, that was my second read of the book and I'm gonna basically next week, read it one more time. Um, is there anything, is there anything, anyone wants to ask me or Johnny? Um. They've been the most incredible bunch, Johnny, fourteen, yeah, Kez, alright, let me um, let me, I'm, I'm mute you.
Hey, everyone.
Yes, Kez, first female boy in fourteen weeks.
Johnny, I just wanted to say thank you for being here and I was just wondering how was that, um, hearing someone else read your story and your experience? But knowing, I know you know that you've written a book, I know you know that people do it, but like, how was it to actually experience it?
Um, thank you, Kez. Um, yeah, it was really wonderful just hearing Aaron reading it just now. Um, because the thing is, uh, when you're writing it, you're really feeling it. And, and then, you know, like all of us, you know, you carry on and you, and your life goes on and I've had other. Stuff, lots of stuff has happened in, in the last sort of like year and a half since, well, a lot, year and a half since I, I finished writing it. And so, coming back to it like that is, is, it's encouraging me. Uh, you know, I'm encouraging myself from my writing again in hearing it and I was thinking, yes, you know, it's um. This is the great thing about, you know, reading and studying, that we can encourage ourselves. And so, yeah, um. Uh, it's, uh, it's wonderful because, um, you know, if I, if I started writing the book now, I'd probably, it would be a different book, wouldn't it? Because we're all, we're all on, you know, on this journey and, you know, new stuff, new challenges, I've overcome more different things. Experienced new things. Um, so going back in time to, to sort of really immerse myself in that then. Was, uh, was a wonderful experience. So, thank you, Aaron. And I'm sure I'm gonna, yeah, go back over some of the Youtubes.
Please do. I love that you mentioned earlier about how passionate he was. I literally have in capitals in my notes somewhere. Um, don't hit your bell with a toothpick and I've drawn like, drawn it every time Aaron's mentioned it. So it's really, really drilled in. So thank you both. And it's been nice, I haven't been able to make it every week, but it's been nice to be able to make it when I can and nice to catch up. Helps. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, man, it's um, I just wanted to mention as well, you were talking about the Phantom City just at the end and it's um, to all of us as we move forward. And we stop meeting each other every Wednesday. Um, you know, in life, there's gonna be times when it seems like you're being, something's kind of gone out of alignment. But when you come from the perspective of recognising that it is an opportunity to grow, I promise you, it is, everything is just, is, you come from a higher perspective. Some people could say you come from the, the heart tracker upwards, you're, you're, you're no longer in survival mode. You're no longer going like thinking, oh man, like, you know, this is wrong. And then you're regressing, you actually, you actually, you get to a life state where you say, universe, bring on more, I'm ready to take on more, because I actually, as, as Johnny just said, he used that opportunity of. You know, he kind of like assumed it would be this perfect um, moment and, and, but actually, he was undefeated, still turned up. And, and I think what I'm taking from this fourteen weeks is like, wow, like, when I'm thirty, forty, I can tell my children, man, listen, fourteen weeks, man, I was undefeated. And each person, all of you are, are, in my opinions, absolute Buddhists, you know, and treasure towers. And if, if, thank you as well, Johnny, because it's you, through your book, you've helped me, like, you've helped me to express my truth, but be able to lean on, on, on. Kind of the left brain knowledge of the book as well, some of the kind of more academic stuff, which I'm, I'm like a fairy, Johnny, you know, I'm just around here chanting barefoot, swinging my beads around like it's the rodeo. I don't specifically need the academic stuff too much, but now I'm realising as well why, when you study and I've said it to you three, guys, always. Whether it's Buddhism or not, faith, practice and study, if you can really remember them, them three things, have faith, first of all, in who you truly are. And the universe and all the synchronicities and everything, yeah, have faith that you chose to incarnate at this time for a reason, however dark and difficult, how much poison and cancerous. Energies are around us, have faith, um, and then study. And so Johnny's book is a perfect example of that. I've, I've now, I'm, when I'm facing the Gohanzen. And I'm looking at it and I'm chanting, it's like, it feels, I feel so much more connected to it because I know about why it's working and I, and I know about the, the heritage of that power. And then I've got the faith, but then also you have to, you have to, you have to practise it. So, you have to practise going out there and revealing your Buddhahood. You have to practise going out there and smiling at someone instead of keeping your eyes down always. You know what, like, whatever it is to just try and be the best version of yourself. And I know Sensei said this, by the way, even if you're someone that's shy and timid, you don't actually have to go around smiling at everyone. But what. Development, developing your faith will do is at the critical moment, you will look at the person in the eyes and you will say what needs to be said, but you can always still be a timid person. You can be a loner, always, there's nothing wrong with that. You can be someone that's always by yourself, but it's important when it comes to faith, as I've said throughout the whole fourteen weeks, remember. We're like potatoes and when we're in a bag, all of our skins, they're only gonna, the skins are only gonna come off if you ruffle them together. And that's what the sangha is, the community of believers. So, you can be a lone wolf, I'm a lone wolf, but um. It's only when I'm together with people that my true, my true character kind of comes out, you know, um, so yeah, uh. One more time, Johnny Gilbert, fourteen weeks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Thank you so much, guys. I've got to go to my next Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Um, yeah, man, I love you. I don't know if any of you noticed, when he was on, I was trying to crack the last popper, brother, it wasn't working. I was like, come on, man, crack, man, pop the ting, man. But um, yeah. Is it this one? I don't know. Hold tight, Johnny Gilbert. So anyway, Maria, Celeste, Joanne, Penny, Joe, Kez. Harley, Natalie. J M, who's J M, man? I'm not a hundred percent who J M is, you know. Chat to me, J M, quickly, before we go. Ask to unmute, let's go. Who is J M? Because you've been a soldier, whoever you are.
It's Jenna.
Say that again?
Jenna.
Jenna?
Yes.
Bang, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for setting this up.
Oh, man, it's, it's been my pleasure and it's been, it's been a memory. And also, I'm gonna be doing it again in like, no doubt, January. I don't know if I'll do another Buddhist book, I would love to. I'd love to go super ham on another Buddhist book, but I feel like I don't want to come across as like the crazy Buddhist guy. You know, there's a thousand, I, I literally have a thousand books I could talk about. I'm thinking maybe. Think and Grow Rich by Napoleon Hill. Um, this is an incredible book, um, which has some deep, deep, no, Joanne's like, ban that, yeah, what are you saying, Joanne? Chat to me quickly, come on, we've got two minutes. What are you saying? Give me something, some, some.
I think we should stick on the path that we've already started on. I don't think we should go off. I don't know, should we do a vote on this? Because we're all here every week.
Well, I'd like that, yeah, maybe put a little show of hands, what do you reckon? Should it show, because I could, I was thinking if I do do a Buddhist book, it would no doubt, well, it definitely be no doubt, change your brainwaves, change your karma, three point one. Um, yeah, show us, Joanne, yeah, yeah, I was. One of the most powerful books ever.
I feel that it has to be that book, only because I've been reading it alongside this and I think—
There we go, man, yeah, 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 yeah. I saw the fact that Kez brang it and it's a shorter book, so we'll no doubt get through it in like six weeks. And Johnny actually mentions the authors of that book, Yukio Masudo, you know, and this book is a bit more science, it's not really about the heritage of Buddhism, it's more about, okay, so what actually happens when I sit there and I chant? What happens to my chakras?
I don't know for these, I'm gonna share because for me, chanting to start off with, I found it really difficult. I don't know if you guys did, I'm being honest with you. It was really hard for me to sit there and especially if my kids are listening, like, oh my god, what am I doing? And reading that book really helped me. So to do it with more passion and Aaron said to do it with your heart, so now with my heart, it's really going there, but it was a book that helped me. You know, just doing it on my own or doing it with Aaron's ten minutes, I don't know how you guys do it. But it took a long time for me to feel comfortable actually doing it, I don't know how you guys feel, but that was for me anyway.
Yeah, I've had a similar thing, not necessarily with chanting, but it was Chris, actually. I was speaking about my struggles with OCD and he gave me this book. And even reading it, it's really— I don't know if anyone has any experience with mental health like that, like if we're talking about in like the 3D world, but to feel constricted and then to not, so to be reading that and to feel lifted in the 3D but also just in other ways as well, it was definitely very, very powerful. So if we do another Buddhist book, I agree that it has to be that one. But I don't also think it has to be—
Okay, you guys are confirming it, man, massively. I read that book in like a week and also like, there's obviously, there's four point O, You Can Be The Light or something. Yeah, this is really—
Maybe it could be another book and then obviously then—
No, no, it has to be that one, it has to be that one. And I've also had a conversation with the authors, like, they literally did an interview with me and sat down and spoke to them. So I could like then show that at the end as well. Yeah, thank you, Kez, Harley and Joanne for confirming that. Celeste and Marie, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to go along with us, yeah. Yeah, okay, perfect, yeah, that sounds like—
I don't know about you guys, but I'm gonna be playing these things over Christmas because as much as I want to remember everything, I've just gone with the flow and there's half of it that I have to keep going back and rereading again anyway. So I'll be reading that again over Christmas.
Yeah, I definitely recommend, I definitely recommend everyone like reads this again in your own time, even if it's in a few years and you'll, everything we've spoke about will just hit you differently because we've all studied it, you know. For sure, for sure, for sure.
Yeah. And just to iterate, what Joanne said, I don't know if that's the right word. Because I've missed some sessions, I've gone back and watched the ones that I've missed and it still hits the same. Still hits the same, it's like watching it live, so those that have been here every week and want to reflect, you'll definitely, I don't know, I've got the same feeling, so.
Amazing. Joe?
I feel really proud that we're here every fourteen weeks because I don't commit to anything, I've like delayed dinners, I've like kept the kids away, you know. I've like completely just gone for it, for just with my heart, so I don't know about you guys, the fact that I've been here every week.
Yeah, man, yeah, you've really showed up. Oh, yeah, is there anything you could share, just as a masculine perspective?
Me?
No, no, Joe, sorry, there's another Joe. Sorry, as the masculine perspective, yeah, because, yeah, Joe's been the only man, pretty much, other than Chris, that's actually turned up, so like, I'm so inspired by you, bro. No, nothing to say? Ask, I'm not sure if you can speak, I'm not sure if this— he also sounds a bit, he looks like he's distracted, I don't know. Okay, nothing from Joe, that's all good. Yeah, man, say no more, I love you. Let's read the guidance one more time then we'll end it. So, remember, guys, be yourself, man, always shine. And it's the hardest thing and it took me until I was twenty-seven years old, which is my number, to realise what it means to stand in my truth, to be unapologetic with every single person in my life. And one of the great things, actually, and this is totally non-Buddhist, is Louise Hay, Heal Your Life, the book. And she says, "To write everywhere, on post-it notes, everywhere, I approve of myself." And it sounds so simple, guys, yeah. "I approve of myself," just like, it sounds so simple. But the more you say it, you're literally creating new neurological pathways in your mind and it's like you're shredding lifetimes, you're also shredding your parents' conditioning that have been put on you and your cultural conditioning. And suddenly, sometimes I need to reel it back in because I'm like, I approve of myself so much. Yeah, it's a bit wrong, so, yeah, man. Try and just really just, you know, if there's, it's one of the harder, you know, when you're chatting to someone and your throat chakra starts to close up, because you don't know what to say, it feels a bit awkward and you're worried, like, just like find a way to just say it and have no fear. Because if that person is actually a good person and supposed to be in your life, they will always show up and you will be mind-blown by the truth that they also have to offer you. But all like, I swear to god, like, truth, communication and being our authentic self is the main point of these fourteen weeks. So November the ninth, don't put on airs, conceit and pretence don't win people's hearts, the facade soon crumbles. Be yourself. Buddhism teaches we can shine most brilliantly through natural unaffected behaviour. Being sincere, dedicated and honest is the key. People of integrity triumph in the end. They triumph in the end. So, yeah, man, someone called Kate has also joined. She's, okay, she just left. Anyway, let's chant three times and then we're gonna end this. We're gonna end this. I might just have to get a Deliveroo, you know, them ones are just like straight, maybe even another bottle, On My Ones. Like, I was sitting here, I've got all this, like, I've got all this, I'm gonna sit here with like a party hat on, on my ones, like, yeah, anyway, cool. Where's my bell? A proper bell, not a toothpick, Kez, yeah, always remember that. Let's go. I love you guys. Did it, I don't know if you noticed, yeah, little man's back, cut, 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 king. Anyone notice I had the balloons, man? I proper made a, I proper made an effort, we're gonna pop them now. They're the SGI colours. Anyway, I want you to all know, by the way, specifically to you, the people online, yeah, Zane, remember you're a king, Zane, yeah? Not just a king, you're a leader. Ay, Zane's got brethrens, yeah, yeah. Okay, anyway, sorry, I'm a little tipsy. I can't even, I was gonna say, just I love you all. Oh, yeah. Obviously, this goes to you people here, I will always be in your life, in whatever capacity. My life is about to expand in ways you can't imagine, I am going to be the most successful person. I'm going to win in this life and I am your brother. Just know that. I'm talking to the ones live, because I don't know who's on the YouTube, they're all like, yo, he told me he was my brother. No, I don't know you, I don't know you, yeah, I'm talking to you guys, I love you. To you guys there, Zane, you're some lions. Zane's friend, I don't know who you are, remember, you are a king, yeah? You're a lion, be happy. Let's go, yeah? Wait, Celeste, tell me your son's name, I wanna speak to him real quick.
No, say Theo.
And my name?
Theo.
Theo?
Two Theos, is your name?
Oh, two Theos!
Theo, say hi to Theo. What chances are that, Zane's friend Theo and Theo?
I'm gonna need to Google what Theo is, I bet it means some crazy thing, like, it's clearly the universe talking, Theo, Theo, I love you. All of you, Maria, all the way over there, Nam Myo Haringe Kyu, Natalie. My absolute family, man, stay happy. Yeah, yeah, I love you, Zane, Joe, J, JM, Harley, I love you, Harley. See you later, guys, bless, drink up, have a good—
Thank you.